I'll call the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We'll start. Mr. Smith, we'll let you know how you can attend remotely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. During the public comment period, if you wish to speak from home, you can use Zoom to raise your hand, or if you call in, simply press star and i on your phone. We'll be glad to pick it up. Thank you.
Okay, do a few introductions. To my far left is Mr. David Williams, representing District 1. Next to him is Mr. Tom Berry, representing District 2. Next to him, Mr. Ned Smith, our county administrator, myself, Karen Carmack, representing District 5. Right next to me is Mr. Mike Byerly, representing District 3. Next to him is Mr. Bill Cox, representing District 4. And lastly is Mr. Tom Latchney, our county attorney. If you could please stand, Mr. Byerly will lead us in the pledge and Mr. Williams will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear my father, thank you for another beautiful day in Powhatan County and all the blessings we enjoy. Amen.
Alrighty, any requests to postpone or add additions, deletions to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to pull Item 8E, E as in Edward, off the consent agenda.
Okay.
And it needs a place to go, so I would suggest that we change Number 10 Public Hearings to Number 11 Public Hearings, and that the new Number 10 would be New Business.
Okay.
And 8E would then become 10A.
Okay, that will work. I also have two additions. I would like to request a closed session, which would then be after our public comment period. And also, I would like to add, I'll add it under your 10B, I guess, would be, for just a brief discussion on some transportation issues and plan. So, I'm going to-
You need a second?
Yes.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Any questions or comments on the motion?
Can we do that all in one motion?
I was, okay, I was saying the same thing. I was like, I don't know if we have to do those individually. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, county administrator updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, proclamation P-2021-06 is a mixed bag of emotion for all of us here in Powhatan. We had the good fortune to have our treasurer, Faye Barton, here tonight. And Faye has provided incredible service to the citizens of Powhatan, to the Board of Supervisors, and to county staff for over 29 years as treasurer since 2000, and as treasurer since 2000. We're so happy for Faye that she is entering her retirement phase of her life and so thankful for the team she's assembled in the Treasurer's Office for the transition of her office. But we will miss you, Faye, in the office on a daily basis. Madam Chair, if you don't mind, and the Board of Supervisors, if you could join Ms. Barton at the podium with the rest of the Board of Supervisors and for the presentation and proclamation, and also a small gift of our appreciation. Thank you.
First, I'll read the proclamation, but I need to be here to do this. I will read the proclamation on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, whereas Faye Barton began her career part-time in the Powhatan County Treasurer's Office in July of 1992, under then Treasurer Ruth Heath, and whereas she then served as Deputy Treasurer under Louise Reams until such time she was elected to serve the citizens of Powhatan County as Treasurer, beginning January 2000, and has served with pride, enthusiasm, and fairness from that time, and whereas she has distinguished herself as a hardworking and dedicated public servant at all times, committed to helping her community in administering tax guidelines with a sense of equality, and has provided leadership and direction to all who have worked with her and for her. Whereas her colleagues have described her as kind, caring, supportive, funny, spunky, thoughtful, confident, outspoken, sassy, organized, adventurous, a world-class traveler, and an overall great boss. And whereas she has made Powhatan County a better place through her years of service and many contributions, now therefore be proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors does hereby commend Faye Barton for her excellence in leadership and public service on behalf of all Powhatan citizens, and wishes her a long and happy retirement with her family.
I've known Faye for some time and have had the opportunity, the privilege of working with her. Faye's been a true professional, and I can say that truthfully, anytime that, you know, I needed something or I needed help with a problem, she was there. She was always willing to go the extra mile to make sure that things got done the right way. That doesn't always happen today. We're gonna miss you, Faye, because you've done one heck of a job for the citizens in this county, and I for one appreciate what you've done, okay? And don't be a stranger, come back.
Thank you. I don't have anything to say, so thank everybody. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, proceeding on.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board. Jason, if you don't mind putting my slide up for me, I'd sure appreciate it. I provided you with a visual on a turn lane on Stave Mill Road heading towards Bojangles Restaurant. A few months ago, Mr. Don Balzler, Benchmark Construction, called me and volunteered to coordinate the improvements needed to repair an unfortunate turn lane design as shown in the pictures above. You'll see the before pictures up top and how the turn lane starts to creep in halfway through, on the way to Bojangles from Stave Mill. Together with Colony Construction and Luckstone, these three companies handled the VDOT permit and the upgrade to the turn lane that now provides a safe, logical passageway to the next retail entrance at no cost to county taxpayers. This resolution thanks Benchmark Construction, Colony Construction, and Luckstone, three of our great corporate citizens for taking part in this project. Tonight, we have Patrick Minnick from Benchmark Construction and Eric Sankey from Luckstone here to accept their proclamation from the board. Thanks, Mr. Sankey and Mr. Minnick, for accepting this proclamation on your team's behalf. Are y'all here?
Come on up. Come on up and get your proclamation. Thank you, guys. That was very, very kind, very generous.
Much improved. You can see the change in the angle and the new pavement there. It's a much improved situation, and I think we'll be safer for, because of that.
Thank you all. Moving on, we will now have our public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your full name and address. You have three minutes, if you're speaking as an individual, and five if you're speaking for a group. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Good, thank you.
All right, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period. We are consent agenda. I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Target.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to appointments, boards, and committees.
We got one more, Item F.
Yeah, we got F.
A resolution.
Oh. That's in the consent agenda. Yeah, that's in the consented, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Now we're moving on to appointments.
Sorry.
That's throwing me off there.
Tonight, we've got a Plan RBA Commission appointment that we need one board member as a second representative on the Plan RBA, and we need to have one person elected to the executive committee. Do we have any nominations for those two positions?
Any nominations for Plan RBA?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'll nominate probably, don't take this personally, we're running out of supervisors. I'll nominate Mr. Bill Cox for Plan RBA.
Okay.
And for the executive committee, it says one Board Supervisor member being as, Mr. Byerly has already been there a year. I'm gonna nominate him for the executive committee.
Okay, all right. Mr. Cox, Mr. Byerly, are you fine with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I think we just do a nod. That sounds good, correct? All right, you're on. Next. Now we have the TPO.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate you for the TPO. I know you're anxious to return and see all of your colleagues again.
That's fine. I will be happy to serve. Unless, any other nominations for that position? Are you, are you all fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we got that done. Citizen appointments. We have the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yes, Madam Chair, one citizen member needed for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Madam Chair, I have a nomination, and before I make that nomination, I would like to give some background of the individual. The individual that would like to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals is Mr. Thomas Fletcher. Mr. Fletcher has a Bachelor of Science in Electrical Engineering from Virginia Tech. He's also got a business, or achieved a business of administration, business administration from VCU. He also has a background in information technology through coursework at John Tyler Community College. He worked at West Bay Co. He was a plant engineer, plant manager, director of production. He's also served in our armed forces, served in the Republic of Vietnam, 1968, 1970, as an officer. He's also been active in his church and active down at Founder's Bridge. Mr. Fletcher was on the forefront of getting issues resolved with the Founder's Bridge Utility Company and proposed tariffs that were put forward. He was successful and prevented the most recent tariff from being inactive. He's worked with the J.C.'s, Big Brothers, and Junior Achievement. Madam Chair, I'll make this as a nomination.
Okay, any other nominations for that position? Okay, um, is this, do we have to do a formal vote or just, are you all fine with Mr. Tom Fletcher?
Yes.
I am, yes. Thank you. Extension Leadership Council, one citizen member.
Madam Chair.
Sir.
This is for District 3. The first thing I'd like to do is, the representative who's been on that committee that we're replacing tonight is Johns Bailey. Mr. Bailey has served on that committee since 1997, 24 years. I think that's an absolute tremendous accomplishment. And Mr. Bailey, thank you very much for giving so much to Powhatan County. Having said that, I have an applicant, Jeannie M. Wade, who I would like to nominate for that role on the Extension Leadership Council.
Second.
Okay, are you all fine? All right.
I'd like to have some comment on the motion in a second. What Mr. Byerly just said about Mr. Bailey, we can't thank him enough. I mean, when you start thinking about this county, Johns Bailey is almost synonymous with Powhatan County, just an outstanding guy who's given a lot to this county. So, thank you, Johns. We appreciate you.
And his barbecue chicken.
The important stuff.
That's right. And he's cooked more chickens than there are Powhatan residents.
Alrighty, so we've got those two set. Upcoming appointments.
Yes, ma'am. In June, if you don't mind, if you could start planning ahead to two Economic Development Authority positions, and also a community policy and management team, a parent representative. We need one of those positions in June, so you guys and gals could do your homework for June. That would be great.
Okay, now we will move on to New Business. Mr. Cox, you wanted to discuss Resolution F, I think it was.
It was eight, page 29, I think.
Page E.
Page 29, as Mr. Byerly said. So, Ms. Smithers, this is 892,000 of ESER funding, which is restricted funding. How does this really work? Does this replace $892,000 that we've given them through their budget? Is this, I'm trying to figure out where the money, I know where the money's coming from. It has some fences around it, as I understand it, but I'm trying to figure out how this will really be, can be used by the school.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. This funding, again, this is the second round of the funding they got. Remember, they got the first round of CARES Act funding of approximately $2.1 million. The second round is this funding here that you're seeing, 892,000, and the third round is coming up at $2.1 million, which has a few more fences that we discussed during the budget process. This money here-
2.1 is a whole different program.
It's a totally different program. It still has ESER, it's an ESER program, but it's another phase that we have not received that money yet, so it won't be coming to, as a board, for appropriation on that money until sometime, probably next six months. This particular money was authorized, and it's, the logistics on it are very similar to the CARES Act logistics for anything that's COVID-related, along, you know, just like a CARES Act money that the schools spend. So, and I think those general rules and guidelines that were applicable to the original CARES Act money that the school board spent apply to this money. Now, they've gotten some guidance about the use of, you know, certain, of the things that they want to talk about. For example, the stipends. They've gotten guidance that stipends are allowable costs for use of that money, but that's a-
I'm sorry, say that again?
They've gotten guidance, they've received guidance that the CARES Act and this second round, the ESER funded 892, does have the same restrictions we had before, which includes the stipend, $290,000.
So, the stipends that they approved can be paid for in whole or in part by this?
That's what we're told, yes, sir.
Okay. Can they use it to offset any of their ongoing operating expenses?
To the extent that they were incrementally incurred because of fact that COVID was in place, they would be able to offset operating costs. So, if they had to hire any new staff, any new bus drivers, anything that was incremental along the way would qualify for, it could be equipment, it could be cleaning materials, all the same items we had in CARES Act.
The description of this really was limited to summer school.
On the, that's on, on the description here, yes, sir.
Okay, so it's much broader than that?
Yes, yes.
As we look at the next round, the 2 point whatever million, I think it's important for us to have a much better idea of how that's going to fold into their operating budget, so that we understand what we are funding and where are there duplications. It's just nice to have this kind of a problem, but I think it's important that the board understands that.
Yes, sir. We'll take care of that for you.
Unless there are other questions, I'll make a motion to approve this. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R 2021-30.
Second, any questions or comments on the motion? I think we need a roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Before we do the roll call, I have a comment I would like to make. We should understand exactly, you know, how this money is going to be used. And I applaud the effort, you know, to have the necessary disclosure, to understand exactly how this will be used in conjunction with the budget. And, Ms. Smith, I appreciate you stepping up and providing more clarity as we go forward. When we're asked to appropriate these federal funds that are coming in, particularly now after we've adopted the budget, so I want that clarity and understanding of how the money is going to be used either within the operating budget, or is going to be used to augment the operating budget, as you said, with incremental costs that were incurred as a result of COVID. I think it's important for us to understand that. So, thank you, Mr. Cox, and thank you, Ned, for providing that. So, my answer is aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Byerly.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye. Okay, moving on, I wanted to add a very brief discussion regarding a potential transportation plan. Mr. Shardine, will you kind of come up and kind of iterate a little bit of what we discussed today? There's been a fair number of accidents, it seems. I don't know if there's more than usual. It's been consistent historically, but it just seems like we've had a lot of significant accidents on Route 60, and I have had some constituents reach out to me, in particular, some of the intersections that they have concerns with. I was talking to Mr. Shardine today, and he made, I thought, a very good recommendation regarding a potential workshop and working with VDOT, if you want to.
Yeah, what we were, what I was proposing, what we're discussing, it seems like every year we have a public hearing and some discussion on the six-year plan, usually around this time of year, but it kind of sneaks up on us. And then unless we're having smart scale, which is every other year, that dictates some transportation discussion, but otherwise, as being such an important part of what you all are tasked to do, it might be good to have, every year, we know that X month is kind of our dedicated transportation month, where we're gonna have VDOT come out, we're gonna have a real concerted conversation countywide about transportation, what work's been done in the past year, what problems we've seen in the past year, looking forward to what funding opportunities might be coming up this year, whether or not it's a smart scale year, just to have a more purposeful and active discussions. This seemed like a good kind of impetus to think about doing something like that, so.
And furthermore, the Route 711 safety study is complete, and I believe they've been working on this Route 60 corridor study for two years now, but that should be complete, so kind of as a part of this whole workshop plan, I think it would be good to kind of have VDOT, you know, Rebecca, give us a briefing on that and hit the high point. So, if you guys can kind of coordinate that, maybe going forward in July, June's pretty busy, that could be something we could look at. Are you?
Madam Chair, I'm fine with your recommendation. I think it's a good recommendation, and so much that there is a lot going on with transportation, particularly now that we're part of the Central Virginia Transportation Authority, with the additional revenues that they're being afforded us, you know, through that new legislation. So, being able to understand from VDOT what is the current issues, being able to explain the Route 711 corridor safety study, being able to share with us what is being recommended with the Route 60 corridor study in terms of these innovative intersection designs, and being able to explain that to us. But while we're on that, Madam Chair, one of the things we need to do, and I've talked to you and to Brad about it, is in the universe of projects that are being scored down at the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization for consideration in the long-range transportation plan, we have a couple of projects that, you know, I've shared with you that we need to get in front of the board and make a decision whether we want to go forward with these projects or not.
Correct.
So, we have some time, but maybe that's something, you know, we could work in as well.
Yeah, that sounds great.
But anyway, thank you for your suggestion.
Alrighty, thank you. All right, moving on, our first public hearing for the evening.
Okay, so the next two public hearings are kind of related requests, so I'm gonna present them together, but I know we'll have to do votes and public hearings separately. So, ordinance number O-2021-09, which is also known as case number 21-04REZ, is a request by James Semrell III to rezone taxman parcel 8-83 from General Commercial to Crossroads. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject parcel so that a request for conditional use permit to allow an automotive wrecker service may also be submitted, because under the current proffered conditions, automotive wrecker service is not listed as a permitted or a conditional use. So, we have to rezone first. So, I'm also going to discuss, in conjunction with this, there's a request for a conditional use permit to allow an automotive wrecker service on the subject parcel, which is located at 4050 Maidens Road. It's approximately 1/10th of a mile south of the intersection of Maidens Road and Old River Trail, and the 2019 Long Range Comprehensive Plan designates that intersection as crossroads on the future land use map. The subject parcel that's actually being discussed, that's designated as rural preservation. At the meeting on May 4, 2021, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request. At that public hearing, one member of the public spoke. They cited concerns with noise, traffic, and the potential impact of this request on nearby property values. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission discussed both requests and voted to forward both requests to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. The vote was four to one. Staff is also recommending approval of these requests. Staff report, supports the rezoning to crossroads for two main reasons, the first being that the proposal will rezone a property from a transition-based district, which is General Commercial, to a rural district, being crossroads. The second reason we're supporting this is because of the property's proximity to a designated crossroads on that 2019 Long Range Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. Staff also supports recommending approval or approval of the conditional use permit request with the conditions that are listed in the staff report. I believe that's, the conditions begin on page 76 of your packet, and there are 17 conditions in total. I'm gonna go over a really, really quick summary of what those conditions detail, but kind of high level. The conditions require that a site plan be submitted and approved prior to operation. That would not actually be required without this condition, just because it probably will not generate enough trips to require that. The conditions also limit the size, location, and duration of vehicle storage, as well as the number of vehicles that are permitted to be stored on the site. Per the conditions, up to 15 vehicles may be stored on the site, and nine of those may be inoperable or wrecked vehicles coming from a car accident. The other six remaining vehicles, they'd have to be towed from, you know, a property, because, you know, Walmart doesn't want them parking there overnight or something like that. The conditions also require that any vehicles that are stored outside be stored screened by a privacy fence that meets certain material standards, and they increase the required setback for that fencing. The conditions prohibit large vehicles exceeding a gross vehicle weight rating of 10,000 pounds from being stored outside. Those would have to be stored inside of a building. They require additional landscaping that wouldn't be otherwise required, including foundation plantings and the preservation of existing landscaping within 50 feet of all property lines. And lastly, the conditions restrict outdoor lighting to only allow fully shielded security lighting that would be activated by a motion sensor device. So, with those conditions, staff recommends approval. The applicant is here tonight, but doesn't have a presentation, but would be available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Would the applicant care to speak or make a statement? You don't have to, if you're not, okay. All right, no worries. We will now have the public hearing on this case. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and full address for the record.
Ronald Flugrath, 3917 Old River Trail. I'm also representing the Mission St. James Foundation, which owns the property immediately to the north of the subject property. On that site, we have two facilities, the St. James Chapel, which is circa around 1880, thereabouts, and the Sally Mission House, circa around 1860. Since 1999, we have been an official 501(c)(3) nonprofit and have worked diligently and constantly to maintain these buildings, restore them, rehabilitate them, to the point now where they're, I mean, they're really fantastic, and we use them as a community center for our some 200 members of Powhatan residents, state residents. We have residents actually nationwide. We have residents actually nationwide because of the Mission family that has interest in the property. So that's the background on that. So that's really what I'm speaking to this evening. My first concern is, well, let me say that we think that the use can be a good neighbor if the conditions are applied properly and enforced properly. And enforcement, I think, here is, is really the keynote. It could end up to be somewhat of a nightmare of enforcement for the county, but, you know, that's, that remains to be seen. With regard to the conditions, condition number five, it says that a conditional use permit for an automotive wrecking, wrecking yard and associated accessory uses, as defined in section so-and-so, requires a conditional use permit, et cetera. It says that vehicle repair and maintenance may be permitted as an accessory use. I could not find that anyplace in the zoning code, zoning ordinance. However, one of the staff members, when I spoke to them on Friday, did find it and said that that was allowed. However, I would like that stricken. There's, I don't see any reason to allow a, an accessory use of vehicle repair and maintenance. That down the road could be a nightmare. Now, you know, the applicant may not be proposing that at this time, but who knows? The CUP is going to run with the land. We don't know what subsequent owners are going to have in their mind to do. So I would like to change the wording in section number five to specifically prohibit any accessory uses at all, because this is a towing operation, wrecking operation, a storage operation, we understand that. But I think the other doesn't need to be included. Item number six talks about a site plan being submitted. I understand from staff that that also includes a landscape plan, a parking plan, everything, but I would like to make sure that the landscape plan is definitely included in that. Number seven, again, talks about associated accessory uses. That should be deleted, I believe I would like, anyway. Let me just read that whole section there. It says, "Structures and storage areas associated with the automotive wrecking service and associated accessory uses," which I would strike, "shall be located at least 250 feet from any residential use existing at the time of site plan approval." I would like to add, after any residential use or institutional use, because that's what we are operating with the St. James Chapel and the Sally Mission House. It's not a residential use, and we need to protect those buildings as much as possible. And I believe with a 250-foot setback, that, that condition can work for us. There was mentioned earlier by staff, the difference between the storing of 15 vehicles and the storage of nine vehicles. I don't understand the difference exactly, but I know in the definition of what a wrecking service is, an automobile wrecking service, it states that no more than nine wrecked or inoperable vehicles may be stored for not longer than 90 days. However, under the standards for specific land uses in 85, section 85-432, it states that you're going to have 15 vehicles. So I'm not sure what the difference is, but, you know, I don't know if that's a glitch in the zoning ordinance or if it's some minor thing that I'm missing there, but that aside. Under condition number 13, talks about shrubs being planted along the foundation. I would like to add, well, let's see, it says, "Building facades visible from US Route 532522." I would like to add, "All three building facades visible," just so it's perfectly clear that we're talking about all three facades. Talks about planting shall be at a rate of one shrub per six linear feet, or the fact that they can be grouped in some, in some fashion, but the, the total would be one per 600 linear feet. That's fine. But I would like to add, "And one specimen tree per facade with a caliper of not less than two inches." I think that would add some height to that two-story building, more screening. It's not a beautiful building, but, you know, it is what it is, so better we can, can more or less hide it. I think that would be a good idea. Number 16, it talks about facade colors being neutral, subtle, not bright, et cetera, et cetera, but there's no condition that the building be painted. Now, I don't know if that can be added. I think it's, it's not in great shape right now, and the applicant may, may decide that he wants painted anyway, but I think it's a condition. It should be added in there as a requirement. And my last comment, my last statement, I would like to add a condition that no illuminated sign be allowed. We know that the applicant would have to apply for a sign permit, for any sign that would be placed on the building, but for that type of use, I don't see why we would need an illuminated sign, and the fact that everything surrounding that site is residential or institutional, then there's no need to illuminate the sign.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? And we got to see if there's anyone on Zoom.
We're clear on Zoom.
There is one.
Sorry, somebody just raised their hand.
Okay.
I can't tell a name. Says G-PAD. I'm not sure, somebody's, one person's raised their hand on Zoom, if they don't, if they don't mind speaking up, we'd sure appreciate it.
This is Ms. Anderson, Felicia Anderson, speaking.
Your address, ma'am?
4032 Maidens Road. I'm adjacent to the tow property.
Okay.
Um, my issue, well, one of my issues, I sent an email regarding these, but has there been any testing or evidence of testing in regards to vehicle runoff in a seepage into our well water? My family has owned adjacent land properties over 100 years, that, as I said, is adjacent to this property. And myself and my mother, we use this water on a daily basis. We drink the water, we use the water. So I need to know whether there was any evidence of any testing for that. The hours of operation, I don't know whether that was stated or not. The noise pollution, has there been anything proposed to mitigate the noise? I mean, the trucks can come in at any hour of the day or night, so I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the fencing, what type fencing are you proposing, and the height of the fencing? There are effects on my right-of-way. Oh, will that affect my right-of-it, right-of-way usage? The, will there be paved driveway because of the dust and gravel disturbance? So I have a lot of concerns regarding, regarding all of this. And the fencing, again, the fencing, well, I'm concerned about the length of the fencing, the height of the fencing, the type of fencing. Will there be any more burning as far as tires being burned or trees, shrubbery being burned there?
Anything else, ma'am?
Um, how does this affect the, the state park that's nearby? I mean, as far as the, the loss of tourism because of the, the traffic, the increased traffic, the, the weight of these tow trucks with the, the tow vehicles, the accidents that may occur at this intersection? I'm concerned about that as well. The lights, what type lighting will he have? We don't, we haven't received anything regarding that. The number of employees that will have access to the property. An environmental study should be conducted on the groundwater and the dust, as I said earlier, to determine the, the long-term health effects on, on myself and my mother or any family members that, that use the water, the groundwater, the well water. And as I said, I sent, I sent an email concerning all these earlier.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else on Zoom? Any other hands?
We're clear, thank you.
Okay, and seeing no one else here, I will close the public hearing, and now we can have some discussion for the applicant or staff. I don't mind starting, since this is in my neck of the woods and literally across the street from me. I have concerns with the fencing and the storage of vehicles outside. I've driven past this for 20 years, and candidly, I've never seen a tow truck go in or out of it, you know, and I believe he has been operating, you know, out of that facility for, for some time. That being said, I am okay with him continuing on in a similar manner that he is. I am not into, this is just me personally, I'm not into building fences, we're not storing cars, we're not doing automotive work there. That's just, I, I won't be in support of that. So I don't know if any of my colleagues would like to weigh in.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Allison. I'd like to go to the rezoning piece first, and a couple of questions about that.
Sure.
Is there a proffered conceptual plan?
There is not. He didn't, well.
So we don't know, so without a proffered conceptual plan, we don't know what's going to be built?
Correct. We do not have a proffered conceptual plan.
The, for my peers here on the bottom of page 54, the footnote talks about the existing entrance to the site was approved with a site plan associated with case number 91. Mr. Lackney, if you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but once we go into rezoning, whatever occurred in 91 is history and does not apply to anything.
That's correct.
Okay? So all entrances have to be reexamined. There is no site plan, and so, and we don't have a conceptual plan. So we're missing a little bit, if you will. The VDOT entrances are different from the county entrances, and they have to meet those spacing standards. So the existing entrance for, under the existing zoning is gone the minute it's rezoned.
Yeah, so in our conditions, we're limiting it to one entrance.
No, 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 no.
We're not.
There's only, if you, if you look at the, you look at the map, I can only, the aerials, I can only see one entrance. Could I have my? There may be two, I've just.
Correct, there's only, yeah, there's only one approved entrance currently.
Okay, so can we blow that up a little bit? Pass this, this is, this is what you're looking at. Because there's some more questions about this. I only see one entrance, and that's right by the building coming off of 522.
Yeah, as that entrance stands today, would not meet our access management standards, so he would have to request a waiver.
Okay, so.
And have that approved.
That's not automatic?
Correct.
Okay, that's, the whole point was, the, the minute we rezone, what existed before goes away.
Correct.
Okay, and nothing comes forward. Okay, so we're kind of starting over. Now, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is existing, the use that we're looking to make part of a CUP is an existing use that's going on today? Okay. No, just, just.
If you would care to come up to the microphone. And you have to do, sorry, you have to do your, state your name and address.
Yes, ma'am. My name is James Summerall, and apparently there's some confusion.
Could, I'm sorry, could you move up there? Thank you.
My name is James Summerall. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm hard to hear it.
I understand. Apparently, there is a little bit of confusion on what's going on over here. I purchased this land quite some time ago, and if, for all the Powhatanians that, that are around, and I'm sure Corinne will, can attest, because she's a neighbor, you saw what the place looked like. It was a dumping ground. Ms. Anderson's family's been dumping around there, the whole property at the back, all her property, has been, is all full of trash, and I have gradually gone in there and cleaned up these properties. I've cleaned up these buildings. I've gotten the debris off of these buildings. I hauled over 250 tires, 100 tractor-trailer tires out of this property, mosquito nest property. We did a lot of extensive cleaning. There were junk cars there sitting up on the front on the road. Harry Upston owned this property, he did nothing with it. I came and I purchased it. I rented it from him for a little while, couldn't do anything to it, left it like it was, couldn't make any improvements. But once Harry mentioned that he was going to sell it, and it went up for sale, I made the investment to keep my business here in Powhatan County. I have several other locations, and I have a location in Gooseland County that we are basically, we're taking places like this that have been neglected, damaged, forgotten, and left behind for someone else to clean up, and an eyesore until someone does. And that was me. I did it with Company 6 Volunteer Fire Department in Haydensville, sat dormant for over two years. Saw a purpose in this building. I purchased it, and I went through all conditions to make it just right. And when you go by my location there today, it's clean, it's professional, it's nice, it's not a rundown location. Now, granted, 4050 Maidens Road has been rundown for many, many, many years. It was a stave mill, excuse me. It was a business, it was, it was a cabinet shop for a long time. I was a boy, I remember going in there and taking, with Alvin Coffee, and going down there and getting boards milled up, if everybody knows that. This place has always been a business, and within the last couple of years, the county took it upon themselves and changed conditions. They limited my conditions to be able to operate there. So I did submit, I did submit proper plans, conceptual plans, as to what I wanted to do. They, they said that we could have 10,000 square foot of outdoor fenced-in lot. I reduced it to 2,500 to try to reduce it all, just to kind of let y'all know that this isn't going to be a wrecking yard like you're thinking. It's just like it's going to always been. It's going to be just like it is now, but better. The buildings are going to be painted in due time. The roofs have been painted. Spent thousands of dollars to repair the roof. I was on the roofs myself, pulling every nail out and putting a screw back in with a washer so that roof won't leak. The buildings were in disrepair. These were burned out, rundown buildings. I've cleaned them up, I've replaced the windows, there are new windows in there. The, the buildings are usable now. I saw something there. I repurposed, and I brought back the history here in Powhatan. I've been driving by this facility since I was a little boy, and I can tell you, it looks better now than it has ever been, and I don't think anybody here can object to that. And it will continue to look better and better. I've slowed down with all the conditions and all they're putting the brakes on. I've slowed down, I stopped, I hadn't painted the buildings, but that is all in the plans. I like things to look nice, professional, and clean. I'm not there to do anything other than to ask for permission to use my property to operate my business, to provide an emergency service that y'all mentioned to me earlier, you having problems with, Route 60, for instance. I do have heavy wreckers. I have light-duty wreckers, I have medium-duty wreckers. I have the, I have the equipment to keep the roads open, and that's what we do, and we're there at a moment's notice for the, for the state police and the county police. And that's what we do, and we're there at a moment's notice for the, for the state police and the county police. Last time, the last meeting that was held here, I had to leave here for an emergency, six-car pileup on 64. And if you've ever been out on 64 on a hot summer day with no air conditioning, the last thing you want to do is have to wait for somebody to get all that mess up for three and four or five hours. Dump truck rolled over last, this morning, I was out there all morning. Rolled over on 64 at the 1:34, at 11, 10:11 o'clock, someone rear-ended them. The debris went all across all lanes, this day was closed down for two or three hours until my team cleaned up the mess and got the debris out. That's what we're here for, we're here to provide service for the county, keep everything clean and nice and neat, and provide a professional service with qualified, certified employees from the county and the state.
Thank you.
You got any questions? I'm here to answer.
Thanks.
No, you've answered my question.
Okay. I'm here remaining, I've got somebody else that had another question.
No, I was, I was looking, I knew there was some history and I was looking for it and you've done a very nice job of providing it, thank you.
How many employees do you have and are you planning on working out of that facility?
Probably just one, and actually I own the home, that's if you put the map back, I actually own the other home up there. I don't know if you know, I bought that home from Scott.
Yep.
You know, and I also, as far as the Sally Jackson, I did all the clearing on that land over there for Scott Morrison. I made it all pretty for y'all. I did all the nice, the great.
You have to address us, sir.
Exactly, I did all the work over there to make everything nice over there for those places. And we cleared it all the way up to where they wanted to.
No, Scott has mentioned you've been a very good neighbor, so.
And I, and I want to continue to be a good neighbor, because that's how things go best. You know, when you can pick up the phone and call your neighbor and, and, and address your problems.
Are you, um, you have the building in the front and then you have the building in the back. Can you put some of the cars in the back?
Oh, yeah.
Like, my point being is, can we, are you okay with getting rid of striking the condition of the fencing with storing up to 15 cars, that just?
Well, that was what I was thinking, I mean, the 10,000 square foot, but let's just be honest, 10,000 square foot's big. Why do I need 10,000 square foot to store what I'm being limited to store? I've got a 7,200 square foot building right there. I could put them all in there.
Yeah, so you're fine with it?
I've been doing it.
Okay.
And then when you put them behind the building, you don't see them either. And I, and honestly, I own all the property around it. So I'm putting up, they require me to put a, an opaque fence, a wooden fence, to mask it from my own properties, which is fine, but I'm just, where does common sense come in when it comes to the fencing, because everybody's concerned about fencing? Nobody's going to see any cars, nothing's going to be stored in the front. You will never see a wrecked vehicle. And honestly, we don't run motor club, it's not like I have five, 10 people working for me, it's just one driver that's going to be handling this area and basically running emergency calls, state and county police, or station calls, people calling on an individual basis. But honestly, that, that's the, we don't run any motor clubs.
Okay.
So we don't stay busy like that. So our numbers are down, are low when it comes to traffic numbers, you know? One or two crashes a week is a good week. You know?
Okay.
There's five or six other tow companies in this county that do the same thing.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant while he's?
I have some more questions for Allison.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I've got a question, Madam Chair.
Sorry.
Mr. Summer.
Yes, sir.
A couple of quick questions. Are you on the Powhatan County Sheriff's Office list now?
No, not because of this zoning issue.
Have you ever had an inspection by the Powhatan County Sheriff's Office?
Yes.
Did you pass or fail?
We passed the first one, but when he came back and he wanted to, he wanted zoning, he, he came out with the zoning, the zoning people from zoning, which at the time, the property was, was zoned to do what I was supposed to be doing. And by the way, they changed his zoning without my notice. I don't live in this county, I live in another county. And I wasn't notified of that, so I didn't, I couldn't keep up with it all. But I'm trying to do the right thing, I'm here today.
I appreciate that.
To try to get the zoning correct.
Sure.
So we can operate like you're supposed to operate.
I think that would be a good idea.
Absolutely. And that's, yeah, you bring up the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
That's why, I mean, we're here to help.
Here's, here's another question. So the building that's out front, for me, I, I, I agree with you in terms of the aesthetics and you want it to look nice. And that's where I come from with this, in, in, in what I'm seeing. That building that's out front, when I heard the conditions, some of those conditions state that you have to put some shrubbery along the front, around that front building. And I'm guessing that's the building that's in, in our packet, which is the two-story building in the front that's visible from the road. The building in the back of the property that I believe is your 7,200 square foot really isn't even visible from the road that much. That building in the front, what are you going to do to that building to make that building look better?
I've already been doing, I've replaced all the windows in that building. I, I had the local insulation company come out and, and blew insulation in the roof. Again, we went on to their roof and we secured all the flues as far as the wood stubs and all go. The roofs have been resealed and repainted, we repainted just to, you know, not only does it look good, but it serves a purpose to seal the roof. We rebuilt the whole entire back area of it, I mean, just trying to make it nicer. You know, there was, when I got there, there was three window units, electric, AC units hanging out the window. Y'all remember that? With a bunch of plywood all, you remember seeing all those? You come by, you saw the window units, well, they're gone now, they're brand new windows up there.
So I appreciate all the things that you've done. My question really is, what are you going to do to that, to that building?
What more do you want me to do?
Do you think you could paint the plywood that's in the windows?
The plywood's been removed.
That's in the large windows? There's three large windows, I mean, I.
You're talking about the far to the right, that's another section of the building.
Right.
Right. Eventually, those windows will be replaced as well.
Right, it's connected, that's my point. The appearance of that building, I think, for me, is a pretty significant thing.
Absolutely, and that's why I've been gradually replacing the things and, and doing the things to make it look nice. We replaced.
One of the constituents asked about auto repairs. Do you have any intentions of working on automobiles?
Well, we, generally, we, we do auto repair. If we need somebody that, say, someone's traveling over the weekend or whatever, we offer emergency auto repair. We, it's, we're basically someone to return, retail in. I'm not in, looking to start a full-plate auto repair because there's 55 of them in Powhatan. I don't need to compete, I don't, that's not the business I'm in. But if I want to repair my truck, I want to be able to repair my truck, want to be able to change my oil on my truck, put a light bulb in without somebody having the reason to be able to turn me into the county. I'm obviously in, on the corner right there and I'm under a washful of eye.
Well, when you're servicing your own vehicle, that's one thing, I'm talking about a retail business. And I, I mean, I've lived in this county since 1962, I've never seen anything going on over there that looks, you know, out of the ordinary, so I, I.
That's what I'm saying.
I disagree with your assessment of that. The, the thing that I'm concerned about is, are you going to, as they've said, you're going to put a sign up, you're going to have a retail automotive repair business, towing wrecker service altogether, or just do towing and wrecker? And if you're going to do some service on your own personal vehicles that your company owns, that's a different story altogether compared to retail.
If I tell you in one day on a Sunday, I want to be able to stop by AutoZone and get an alternator on and put it on, in, on your car and get you going. I want that option to be able to help somebody. I don't want to have my hands tied. I'm not looking for auto repair, full-blown facility, I'm not looking to put a light lid signs. There's actually a sign already there. I might make, I might change it to put it further out or whatever, whatever needs to be done to keep conditions. But I'm here to do whatever is needed. I'm not here to make any changes. Honestly, I mean, it's really nothing to see here. It's, it's been, the towing has been going on and the recovery work's been going on there. People concerned about noise, well, they should have been complaining for many years, because there is none. We had, it's not like there's a lot of noise.
And you're willing to park anything you tow inside of the 7,200 square foot building, inside of there?
If I need to, and then I won't need to put a fence up.
Correct.
If that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
And, I mean, if that's what it's going to take to make everyone happy, that's what we need to do, that's fine. But in as far as Ms. Anderson's right-of-way, she, her right-of-way comes directly across my property. When I got there, it was five to seven, eight inches of water standing in her right-of-way, because nothing was right, you, anybody went in there, the whole place was torn up, you could barely get in there. I took my bulldozer and I went in there and I straightened the road out so we don't have a big mosquito pit for everybody to suffer.
I, I.
And I made it nice for her.
That's good for me, Mr. Summer, I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. Cox?
I'd like to talk.
With Allison. Okay.
Y'all down with me then?
Yeah, we're done. Thank you.
Hang loose, we may want you back. Let's go back to, let's go to page 71, this is the rezoning. And there it defines automobile wrecker service. Says that if an establishment has 10 or more inoperable vehicles, then it becomes a salvage and a junkyard. Okay, that's the definition.
Yes.
Then the U standards allow 15.
Yes.
You can't have 15.
So.
You, you have to use the least.
Yes.
The most restrictive.
Mr. Lackney, maybe you can weigh in on this. The way we were interpreting it was to mean that, because it specifically says in the definition, no more than nine wrecked or inoperable vehicles. And then in the U standards, it says, how is it worded? Excuse me? There we go, it says, the number of vehicles stored on site shall be limited to 15. So our interpretation there, or what we are understanding that to mean is cars that are in an accident or are inoperable that get towed to that site, you cannot exceed nine. But if, for example, a property owner has a car towed that's just, you know, it's not inoperable, it completely functions, but it is just parked where it should not be and they have that towed, that would not count against those nine, so you could have six of these.
It's impossible to ever understand.
Yeah, so we can clarify that for, yeah.
I mean, you've got your item number, condition number nine. If he has 15 vehicles.
So, yeah, the way that condition, we can change the wording of the condition, it matches that where we can just reduce.
Those are, those are, those are in conflict, okay? Let's go to page 88. And what I'm concerned about here is the way in which we have put these things together doesn't look like he can, he can achieve them. Okay, it just looks like it's impossible. Seven. Structures and storage areas associated with the automotive wrecker service and associated accessory units shall be located at least 250 feet from any residential use. Could I have my map back up, please? And if y'all would look at this. And applicant owns the trailer at 4060 Maiden's Road. And right behind that is his storage shed. And it's not 250 feet away. And if he puts that fence, he's reduced, okay, we may or may not need a fence, but the fence would be on the western side of that building, which he reduced to 250 square feet, there will not be a 75-foot setback from the, from the property line. It's not possible, looking, looking, if you look at, if you look at page 86, that's the map that he provided us, it's dark. You can see in the upper left, you can see the building, you can see his 50 by 50, okay? If that's 50 by 50, there's no way it can be 75 to the property line or over 250 from the structure. So we're, we're producing, the way I see it, we're producing, whether we like them or not, we're producing conditions that the applicant can meet. And that doesn't take us anywhere. So I've got some concerns about where we've gone in terms of putting this together. So the, the conditions don't seem to work for the, for the actual situation on the ground. And so we've either got to change those or telling me can't do it.
Any insight, Allison, or?
So the conceptual plan I requested isn't necessarily drawn to scale, so I have not verified whether it can fit in that space. But when a site plan came in, comes in, it will have to meet those standards. So we'll have to set 50 feet back unless we change that as it's written today.
I, I'm sorry, I appreciate that, but we can't wait for a site plan to figure out whether this man can run a business or not. We've got to do it ahead of time and we need a conceptual plan that makes some sense. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm finished.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chair. For me, I'd like to ask Sheriff Nunnely to come down. I guess everybody recognizes you at this point, don't they?
He's the guy with the gun.
And the badge.
Sheriff Nunnely, it's been brought up that your department doesn't do business with this gentleman. And reasons were given for that, would you care to elaborate?
I know that our tow list requirements that you, y'all were referring to earlier are different than the county requirements and not dependent upon those. And that my chief deputy handles the inspections of any of the companies that wish to be on our tow list and the state police has somebody that handles it for them. And that my chief deputy of the last inspection wasn't satisfied that the requirements were met from our list and that had nothing to do with your requirements. And so at that time, and we haven't worked together, I think, about two years, two years? Okay, it's been a little longer than two years. Really? Yeah, you were on the list of. Yeah, yeah, so it's been some time since they were on our list. But the most recent inspection was somewhere around two years ago and it was not up to our satisfaction.
What specifically is in your requirements that weren't met?
I couldn't tell you exactly what it was, that's, my chief deputy handles that. I just got a report back from him saying that he wasn't going to approve putting them on, on our list. So I didn't ask him for any specific reasons. I do believe there was a question about a business license, I do recall him bringing that up. Whether or not you had proper, yeah, had a proper license in Powhatan, and we do require.
Hang on, sir, sorry, sorry, can't, can't talk.
Yeah, and that very well be why he didn't have a business license. But, you know, as I was saying earlier, our approval of a towing company, the two things don't coincide. You know, if they have a business license, we assume they've met your requirements and that's why we have it in our list.
So best of your recollection, he didn't have a business license?
At that time.
At that time.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
No, of course.
Staff, would you please come back? Let me ask my questions, okay? The gentleman put forward that we changed his zoning. Yet I'm looking here at the footnote where it says, case 91-01-REZC, which rezoned this property to general commercial, included a proffered condition that limited the permitted uses to the following. Office, technical contractor, cabinet, woodworking, managed storage, and was it boat?
Yeah, a boat hull.
Boat hull, what is that?
I think it's a storage of boats.
Okay, that's a new one for me.
I didn't make it.
Didn't know we had that kind of specificity for.
That was 91, I don't know.
Okay. So that's the rezoning that we got with the property. And going back to the gentleman, he said we changed the zoning, did we?
So I believe the confusion here is it's zone general commercial and there was a list of permitted uses in general commercial that did include automotive wrecker service. That automotive wrecker service use was moved to the conditional use list with, I think, maybe a 2018 changed the, the ordinance. However, he always had those proffered conditions, I can't speak to what. I can't speak to what was said.
But there's one thing with what the general commercial, you know, said was what were permitted uses and conditional uses. Another thing, when you got your rezoning based on specific uses that were proffered.
Correct. He would have never actually legally had that available to him.
That's, that's the point. That's the point. You know, it's one thing to have the general commercial district with permitting conditional uses. So another thing to get your rezoning where you got proffered conditions that limit that list. And in this case, it limited it to very specific things. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all my questions for right now, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Mr. Williams, I'm, I don't know, I don't know the answer that you got. I'm trying.
Well, I'm, so, so I think.
So the, the answer, I'm assuming from staff is that the assertion that we changed the zoning isn't correct. Is that true?
Correct. We stripped the uses.
But, so this is, this is the confusion is if you didn't look up the proffered conditions that are associated with that property, it would look like we stripped the uses. Because we did strip the uses.
Yeah.
And it would have looked like that was previously permitted. However, because of the rezoning in ninety-one, that proffered only six permitted uses, he technically never had access to that whole list.
In ninety-one, he never had it anyway.
Yeah.
It's a little confusing because there are a couple of things going on.
Well, it's not confusing, excuse me, let me finish. It's not confusing to me because I just asked staff, when you got your rezoning, you had proffered conditions that limited the number of permitted uses that you could do. And the proffered conditions controlled it. It wasn't what was in the zoning. That's a more exhaustive list. Now, we did take out uses in that zoning district. But that's not germane to the proffered conditions that were accompanying the rezoning. Is that clear?
In nineteen ninety-one.
Yes.
It is almost clear.
Yeah.
Okay, one could, could ask Alison one question about, you live in, in, in our, in our packet, it lists five uses that could have been used for this building.
That was the ones I just went through.
Right.
Okay, so that's all. So if he's running a wrecker service, it doesn't meet, doesn't meet any of those uses.
Any of those proffered agreed to uses.
I'm there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I won't make it more confusing. Yes, correct.
Okay. Um, this is kind of a mess. I would like to maybe take a little time and look at these conditions. I would feel more comfortable doing that, take a month and look at some of these conditions. Yes, Mr. Cox?
Madam Chair. There are conditions that have problems because they're not clear. As a question, I've raised questions about practicality, whether we can really use them. We haven't even touched the entrance, okay? We haven't even touched that. And before we can go forward, we need a conceptual plan so that we know all at one time what we're looking at, whether that will meet the distance requirements. And so I, I think a deferral would give us an opportunity to get some clarity.
Correct.
Madam Chair, Mr. Cox had asked the county attorney, if we did the conditional use permit as proposed, that that would supersede the rezoning that took place in nineteen ninety-one.
If I could, the minute we, there's two pieces to this, okay?
Yeah, but.
But the minute we rezone it, not to, not to CUP.
Yeah.
Okay, the, the ninety-one deal is dead.
Right, that's why, I'm sorry, I misspoke. When me and we go to the crossroads rezoning.
Correct.
Then that entrance now comes under the microscope because it doesn't meet our access management standards and would require a waiver.
Or a movement of the entrance further south.
I'm assuming the plan would be available.
I, I, I don't know, but we haven't, we gotta address the entrance. That's not even.
That was a good point for me. You know, be careful of what you're doing. Know what you're doing because it's gonna trigger, you know, that, you know, a waiver from us if we decided to go forward.
Well, we don't have an entrance that meets our standards.
That's what I'm saying. It would require, you know, a waiver.
And the conditions that are listed list the VDOT standards. It for some reason doesn't talk about Palatán standards.
Well, VDOT actually did. VDOT said they gave our, you know, standard, which was six hundred and twenty-five feet. But VDOT also said something else. They said closing one of the two entrances and they recommended closing the one to the south. You just pointed out there's only one entrance.
That's all I can find. If I might, Madam Chair, condition eight says one entrance shall be permitted from US Route twenty-two. The entrance shall be designed and constructed to meet or exceed the standards established by the Virginia Department of Transportation for commercial entrances. No, it's got to meet the Palatán standards.
I think what they're talking about, the commercial entrance is the fifty-foot commercial entrance.
You're talking about the width of the actual.
The width of the actual, okay. So they're not talking about the spacing requirement.
That's exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Two different issues.
Okay, I move we defer ordinance or case two-one-zero-four dash R E Z.
Second.
Questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a date to defer to?
Good call. To our June, what's our?
Meeting, June regular meeting.
Yeah, June regular Board of Supervisor meeting.
June twenty-eighth.
June twenty-eighth, okay. I'm saying, all ayes, okay? And then moving on, I am going to move that we defer case two-one dash zero-one CUP.
You need to open a public hearing on this one first.
I do need to do, I can't wait.
One public hearing? Well, you could, you could defer the whole thing, including the public hearing if you'd like.
That's what I was thinking. Should I defer the whole thing? I mean, that's, or do you?
So just make it clear that the, the first one, there's not gonna be a second public hearing. But if you want to defer it with the public hearing, then that, that just should be clear in the motion that you're deferring the whole matter, including the public hearing today.
Okay, yes. All right, then I would like to defer case two-one dash zero-one CUP and have the public hearing at our June twenty-eighth meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Madam Chair, if I may, there might not be a public hearing on the CUP if the first motion to rezone doesn't go through.
But we, then we don't worry about it. Any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All righty. Moving on. Next public hearing.
Okay, so the next public hearing is for ordinance oh dash twenty-twenty-one dash eleven, which is also known as case number twenty-one dash oh-two CUP. It is a request by Christopher Wilburn to allow a detached accessory dwelling unit in the single-family residential two or R-two zoning district at thirty-five ninety-two Timberview Road. The parcel is also identified as tax map parcel sixteen dash one B dash thirteen and is located in the Woodlands subdivision. If approved, Mr. Wilburn plans to convert up to eight hundred square feet of an existing detached garage into living quarters. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request at their meeting on May fourth, twenty-twenty-one. No members of the public spoke on this request. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to forward the request to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Staff also recommends approval of this request with the conditions listed on page ninety-seven of your packet. These conditions address the location and size of the accessory dwelling unit. I don't believe the applicant's here. And I don't know why, but I can answer questions if.
All right, if the applicant is not here, we'll have the public hearing on this case. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. I'll make sure there's no one on Zoom. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And do y'all have any questions for staff?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I know this is a question that came up in the Planning Commission. The Woodlands subdivision has covenants that restrict this use. Is the applicant aware that we can approve this, but the covenants and deed restrictions for the subdivision are something that they can enforce anytime they want to? And the fact that we say it's okay is, has nothing to do with those covenants.
Yeah, we've had several conversations with the applicant about this and then an extensive discussion of the Planning Commission where the applicant acknowledged she understood that.
Okay.
All right, any other? If not, yes, sir.
It says it was just recently built. Was there a reason that they didn't do this in the original plan?
Well, they wouldn't have been allowed to in the original plan, so that's the main reason. They'd have to get this conditional use permit first. So I am assuming he just went ahead and did the garage and then hoped to convert that small space later if this was approved.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I move we approve case two-one dash zero-two dash CUP. About a second?
Second.
Yeah, okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? Do I need to do a roll call for this? All right, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Barley.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye. All right, moving on, we now go into our workshop discussion, update on the courthouse parking lot expansion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Carter's here with us tonight. I know the board expressed some interest at previous budget meetings about the merits of courthouse parking expansion, the cost of the expansion, and the timing. So we've got an update for you tonight. If Miss Carter could come forward and give you that, that update. We do have some financial project, updated projections and a little bit more detail on, on the project itself.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you about this project. I know the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of questions about it. And we didn't have a lot of answers at that time about costs. We were just basing it on estimates in the, when we pulled the bonds in two thousand and eighteen. So in your packet are some updated estimates from the consultant. And they are substantially higher than what was proposed for the CIP project. Part of that, part of the reason for the increased costs is, one, the construction industry now post-COVID. All of the material costs and the construction engineers and the contractors are all very busy. And we're not getting a lot of interest in projects, so the costs are going up. Also, in our original estimate, we hadn't accounted for, it was before the design was done. And we didn't account for the drainage issues, the stormwater collection that we would have to do. And the size of the parking lot, the quantities were a little bit less than what the design ended up being. So I can answer any questions that you may have on the project itself or the timeline?
I have a question. I did a little digging after the last meeting that we had. I contacted the sheriff, the judge, the clerk of the court. And none of them seemed to be too concerned with the parking. So I'm just kind of curious of, you know, I wasn't on, obviously, the proceeding board. Is the fruition of this whole project, you know, being it was to expand the parking and none of them seemed too worried about it? I was kind of like, why are we worried about it?
I can tell you the part of the reason they're not that concerned now is because of that temporary parking that we did as part of the courthouse expansion project.
Behind.
Yeah, it's still gravel right now and it's actually proposed to be paved as part of this project. But now the circuit court, the, the personnel there park in that temporary gravel parking lot, which has alleviated a lot of the pressure from the sheriff's department to park over on the gravel side. So, so that's part of it. I, I think another part of it is that with COVID, the courts haven't been in session. So we haven't really seen a, a lot of the.
Faded memories.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
The, what you show is a courthouse parking, the piece you just talked about, doesn't have that many parking places.
I believe it has thirteen or fourteen.
And so thirteen or fourteen relieves the whole problem.
It, not the whole problem, it, it relieves some of it.
Like Mrs. Carmack, I'm looking, well, now we're talking about six hundred and thirty-seven thousand plus another twenty-two thousand, okay? And I'm trying to find any value in this. I can't find anybody that's standing up saying that we should do this. Or a reason why.
We did get a lot of complaints from the commercial, the restaurants around there that when court was in session, people were parking over there because there was no place to park. And I actually experienced, I was telling Mr. Smith there earlier today that when we were doing the courthouse expansion project and I, and we had to come over here for inspections, we had to walk from over there because there was no parking.
But we don't guarantee the restaurant's street parking, do we?
No, it wasn't the street parking. They were actually parking behind, like behind the county seat. They were parking in that parking lot.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Well, obviously, if, you know, during the construction period, there was probably less parking available because of the construction, number one. Number two, people had to come here to work on the, you know, extension. So it would make sense, you know, that we probably would have more cars parked around here and less space available. I can only share with you my experience with the previous board. When I asked the same question and I asked it to the former county administrator, I said, where did this project come from? Shared with me, and I believe the other supervisors, that it came from you, Ramona. That, you know, you were the genesis of this program.
Correct, because we were getting the, our, our field people that were out doing the work and mowing and stuff, were getting the complaints from the restaurants.
Okay. But I'm like you, Mrs. Carmack and Mr. Cox. I'm having a hard time getting my arms around this ever-growing project and understanding why we're going forward when I haven't seen what is the need. It's not really blinking red in front of me. Now, if we looked at doing, you know, the parking lot, there was thirteen, you know, spaces, you know, behind the courthouse, I'm, I'm fine with doing something like that. But at, at this time, I'm really struggling. And I think that was the reason, Madam Chair, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but you asked for other projects for consideration for this meeting tonight and I didn't see them in the packet. Because there was a clear indication, I think, from board members last meeting that we were having problems with this project and that maybe we would want to consider something else, something that had more utility. Do we have other things that we could consider tonight?
Miss, Madam Chair.
Mr. Cox.
We have a project at our fire station where we can use this bonded money for capital improvements and reduce the amount of general fund that has to go into it. So it is a perfect place for just, just to slide in. I think you understand the need for the fire station. I think you, you beat us up pretty bad on it. So, so we have, we have a place to put the money that's, that's.
Well, that was, Mr. Cox, Madam Chair, if I may, that, that was the reason, I think, that you requested, you know, recommendations from staff, you know, so that we wouldn't just be relying on memory of what we could recall, but things just like what Mr. Cox said, you know, that we know we want to do. Maybe we've got in the CIP for this year or maybe in the out years. And if we can take those dollars that we wanted to market for and roll them and reduce that cost, you know, their projected cost, that's what I would like to do. And I, I think that would be what we would all be agreeable to do. But again, I would like Mr. Smithers and staff to come forward, you know, with that list, looking at all the different projects and any nuances related to them so that we can make a good decision going forward.
One thing I'd like to add to that, is there any way we could modify the plan a little bit to make that parking lot more aesthetic, a little more usable? Is there some, you know what I mean? We don't need to spend six hundred thousand dollars on it. But can we do something where, I don't know, you put the gravel down, you pave the, the area right behind the, um, the courthouse and you put some shrubs around it, make it look better?
That was gonna be my suggestion is maybe we could pave the temporary, the courthouse parking lot and pave that section along thirteen where the drainage issue is. And then just do the part that is currently gravel. Because that wouldn't trigger the stormwater requirements.
Okay.
So.
I'm sorry.
Say that one more time. Yeah, okay. Say that one more time, all right? Area behind the courthouse paved.
And that one's already gravel, so it wouldn't, it's, and that was the twenty-one thousand.
Okay.
And then the, the part of the drainage along Route thirteen.
The VDOT right away.
Yes.
Is that a water, that's problematic, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, and it's gravel right now, so that would pave that part as well to take care of that drainage issue. And that was seventy-eight thousand.
Okay.
Around there. And then just pave the, the part, the sheriff's lot that we were talking. Around there. And then just pave the, the part, the sheriff's lot that we were talking about, just pave the gravel area, because that wouldn't trigger the stormwater, because it's already impermeable.
We're back, we're back to paving almost all of this again.
No, they wouldn't add that area back over by the pediatrician and all that, basically, is.
It, it would be thirty-five spots.
You're paving, as I understand what you said, from the Commonwealth attorney out.
Right, so that the gravel parking lot, we said, was about thirty-five spots, as opposed to.
I won't support that.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So what you're talking about is the area that's right behind the clerk's office. That's twenty-one thousand.
Okay, let's see, hang on, it's up there.
Twenty-one thousand dollars.
I'm, I'm all for that.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'm with Mr. Cox on that. Now, when you get to the front part there, where we're talking about the drainage issue.
Mm-hmm. We did get some agreement from VDOT that they may contribute to that, because.
Is that the green area right there? I mean, okay, that's the green area. Okay.
We may is I want to know, okay? And then the second part of the I want to know is, as was said earlier, I'm all in favor of being good neighbors, but where that asphalt starts there, we don't own that. I mean, that's not Palatine County's property there. There's a private.
Right, and I wasn't, what, what I was proposing was just to do the gravel part and not match up with, and use our current entrance on Marion Hartland Drive.
The gravel part that is between the parking area and Route thirteen now, is that the part you're talking about?
The, the part that's from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, straight down to Route thirteen.
Where the cars are parked.
See where the cars are parked right now.
Owen, Owen would set up with this. Right, okay. So why would we pay that? What's the value?
Well, it's, it's a value for my department because of snow removal.
I'd rather, I'd rather, I'm.
I do think it would improve the aesthetics as well of the courthouse area. We.
If it were your money, would you be spending it?
Yes, I would. I would. I would, just, just for the overall bringing the village area together. And I would still, we could still do lighting in there, which would match up with the courthouse lighting and the the street lighting that we're proposing, that project as well.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So there's no price there. There's no cost. I mean, I see seventy-eight thousand, but that's to the
For the off-street.
South.
Yeah, it's, the price is the five hundred and fifty-eight thousand for that whole red piece, which we're only proposing to do part of.
You're not supporting, and I'm not supporting that. I've never supported this since it was four hundred and thirty thousand in the beginning. I wasn't even on the board. I thought it was kind of crazy personally, but here, here's a question. How much, the initial bond was four hundred and thirty thousand, right, Mr. Smith?
Sir.
How much of that four hundred and thirty thousand have we spent right now?
About sixty-two.
Everybody up here is saying sixty-two thousand.
For the engineering.
So we're sixty-two thousand less on a job we're not going to do. So we just poured that sixty-two thousand out in the road, and we probably have consensus, I don't want to speak for anybody, but I, I'm okay with the twenty-one thousand. But the first thing on the to-do list or option list would be taking this funding that's left over, and let's think about whatever, but the first thing is, how about expanding the parking at the Palatine Landmark Center gym?
That, that was one of the projects that I had proposed as well.
Is that one that's, okay, well, that's just one that, I mean, you have the firehouse and everything else, and I, I get that. So I'm just throwing a suggestion out as another place to where we can go with whatever we have left, three hundred thousand dollars by the time we get through with this.
And actually, I don't think we've spent that full sixty-two thousand. That was the, the contract agreement with the engineering.
Can we get a refund?
No, but we didn't spend it all.
Uh, what are you, what are your thoughts with the, um, the off-street parking for the seventy-eight thousand, if that mitigates some of the, I, I don't know the stormwater issues or the runoff issues there. I'm not sure if that will. Mr. Chris.
And, and that area, Michael Potter has done some work in that area since this project was proposed, which has fixed some of it, but not all of it.
Okay.
So for the off-street parking portion, Mr. Byerly, to get directly to one of your concerns, VDOT did express to me interest in helping to fix that situation because of the drainage issue. I would very much like to go back to VDOT and try to get something formal from them in terms of commitment for support and extent of either financial or in-good services that they would provide, so that we can then amend that budget and go back, come back to you with an updated number and scope that would handle that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so to summarize, we're good with the courthouse parking. We're going to look at VDOT helping with the off-street parking for seventy-eight thousand, and nobody seems too excited about doing anything with the sheriff's parking. Am I correct?
And we're going to be looking at other projects, and we're going to asking staff to come forward with that exhaustive list of other opportunities.
Okay.
Madam Chair, even if it's that specific area, the five fifty-eight, I don't think any of us are interested in, even if that was expanded to some degree with stone.
Right.
To create more parking.
But that would trigger the stormwater, because it, yeah.
I got you.
Is there anything we can do there to make it a little better, the sheriff's parking? There is.
To increase number of spots. Yeah, we, I mean, we could, we could stripe it or mark it so that they park in there better. Yeah, so that they put in wheel stops, so that it was better delineated where, where people could park.
Okay, Mr. Cox.
I'm still having a whole lot of problem with you making gravel increase the runoff.
I, 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 I didn't make those rules.
No, I'm not, no, I, 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 I just, okay. We can put more gravel there and make it look nice.
That's exactly, just make it look
Yes.
Better.
But we don't need to spend, that's, we don't need to spend any money on that, okay, in re, in reality.
Yeah.
Five hundred and fifty-eight thousand is money. So, or, we're going to do the courthouse parking.
Yep.
We'll take a look at off-street parking once VDOT talks to us.
Yes, and we'll do some, gussy up the.
Whatever's left over is going someplace else. Mr. Smith is going to help us find a place to put it.
And Mr. Williams, Mr. Cox, members of the board, we've got a long laundry list of prioritized C I P projects over the next ten. This money simply just pushes, just jumps into the mix and pushes, we'll find a project somewhere in that ten years at the back end to add on, but.
Okay.
So you'll just suck it up.
So, do, do you think we could get that list within the next month or two?
Well, you've got it, right? I mean, we, we got seven million eight appropriated for this fiscal twenty-two.
Yeah.
In projects, and for example, the four hundred thousand landmark is, is a budgeted project right now.
Right.
That we're planning on paying out of cash with good general fund balances. So whatever project, if, if, I, I look at it, it's going back into the suit. This, this money that we save here goes back into our general fund, and we've got projects lined up to spend it, so I'd be glad to shoot you to go over those projects again with you next time, if that helps.
Yeah, just to get some sort of, or, or at least have you kind of prioritize. I mean, I know we have a prioritize, but if you can hone it in a little bit, that would be helpful.
We're putting the money in the calendar, it's going to go right through it.
Okay, all righty, so thank you, Ramona. Moving on, discussion of inoperable vehicle policy.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Shardine's here tonight to give you a little update on our progress in that area. Brett?
Yes, so there was brief discussion at the last meeting about wanting to look at our inoperable vehicle standards in the ordinance. So currently, in residentially zoned areas, we allow one inoperable vehicle if it's covered, but most of essentially all the complaints that we get are more agricultural areas, so we could talk about the residential if you want. That's not really been the problem area, as far as I know. But in the agricultural zoned areas, we allow up to nine inoperable vehicles, so long as no more than five of them are visible from the roadway or adjacent property lines, and that's most of where our complaints and issues come in. You know, although the zoning ordinance requires any new agricultural lot to be ten acres, we've got plenty of them that are much smaller, you know, one, two acres, even smaller than that. So if you get nine vehicles up towards the road, even if some of them are covered, you know, that can start to look unsightly to folks. So sometimes people are shocked when they, they call in about a problem. We look at it, inspect it, and say, no, you know, you're, you're allowed to have that many there. So if you all want to do something different, you know, there are some things we could look at. We surveyed some other localities, neighboring localities, as well as some other more similarly situated rural localities, and you can see with our limit of nine in total, five unscreened, we're significantly higher than most. Chesterfield and Cleveland are both going to be not allowing any, zero unscreened vehicles. Goochland allows up to three, but they must be screened, handover just one, and then New Kent, again, zero, unless you can have one that's being actively worked on or repaired. So our, our five to nine is going to be significantly higher than many other similar jurisdictions. So we could look at, if you all wish, reducing the total number, requiring more of them to be fully shielded or screened, things like requiring them to be to the rear or side yard of the primary structure of the home, so you can't have them in the front yard, which is often what we get complaints about. Requiring fitted covers, you know, currently allowing tarps and things like that can be sometimes just unsightly as what's underneath, so requiring more of a fitted, clean cover. Those are some of the options. So no public hearing or anything on this tonight, just wanted to see, you know, is this something you all would like to work on? In any general direction on what you do and don't want to see, we could work on that, bring it back for a public hearing or workshop.
All right, this is, this is my thanks for the evening, Madam Chair. Right now, you allow, zoning department allows people to use covers to, quote, shield or screen from view. That counts, so this tarp that goes over top of the car, that means they're shielded or screened from public view?
I believe so.
Is that a cloaking device? Because you can still see the vehicle.
Right, yeah.
It's actually from state code, Mr. Williams. Actually, that's how state code divide, defines a shielded vehicle as a cover or shield. That's literally lifted out of state code.
Really? Gives me more confidence in the General Assembly every day. Okay? I don't agree, okay? And I've brought to your attention an example, okay? Imagine you're going down a collector road, and you look over and you see these parcels that, you know, have been created. They're not ten-acre lots. A lot of times, they're only two-acre lots, might be five-acre lots. But they're zoned A-ten, but really, there are subdivisions along a collector road. And then right out in the front yard, you've got eight vehicles that are inoperable in full view with a tarp over top of them. And again, Tom, I, I realize with the General Assembly, you know, and their definitions, you know, what they say, but I don't agree with that. If you're the person that's driving by, or you're the person living next door, do you really want to see eight inoperable vehicles with covers over top of them? I wouldn't. As far as I'm concerned, you shouldn't be seeing them unless they're being actively worked on or something like, I get that, okay? But you shouldn't see them. There's ways to do that. I don't believe putting a tarp over them in the front yard is a way of doing it. So I'm looking for relief for neighbors who are living side by side, analogous to living in a subdivision, who are having to see this. None of us would want it. None of us. So I'm looking for guidance as to how we can amend our ordinance and such that we can deal with this problem, you know? You can either, you know, move them to the backyard where they can't be seen. I'm fine with that, or put them inside a building. Tenses, I know that people have done that. I don't want to see them, and I don't think, you know, other people want to see them. That's where I'm getting my complaints, and some of the times this is occurring right next to some of our public facilities, which is triggering people calling me and complaining. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lackney. In Rico County, do you have, do you have this?
I got the agenda, yeah.
Take one nineteen, right here. Uh, if you look on one nineteen in Rico County, they don't allow for, quote, ghost cars, those with tarps over them, okay? They said that doesn't meet their screening. So if Henrico's done that, I presume we can, we can alter that if we so desire.
Yeah, what, what state law, let me tell you what the state law allows. It says any locality made by ordinance provide that nobody can keep a inoperable vehicle except in an enclosed building or structure or screened from view. And it says, in addition, we can allow them to be covered or shielded. So the shielded and covered is the in addition authority. We actually have the authority to say they either have to be indoors or screened.
We can define screening?
Yes.
As not to include tarps?
Yes, tarps are, tarps are under covers, and tarps would fall under the cover category, which is an additional way you can regulate.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Rico County.
Yeah.
So going forward, would you like staff to basically work on coming up with a
Yes.
better ordinance?
Yes.
Code, 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 because this is county code, and this does not have to go through the planning commission. Okay.
Just requires a public hearing of you.
Okay, if you could work on that and bring that, do you think June would be enough time?
Yeah.
Okay, for our June twentieth meeting?
Yes, sir.
How many are we talking about, Mr. Williams? How many vehicles? You want to go to zero?
I don't want to see them.
Any of them?
I don't want to see them, you know. I don't think that's an imposition, you know, it's kind of like, you know, you really won't, you know, except when you have trash pickup day, you really want, you see what I'm saying? You, you don't want to see it. Put it in the backyard, you know, so.
One, uh, to that point, one issue we might want to address is putting them in the backyard in an ideal situation will solve it, but depending on who, what's behind them, it could just make it somebody else's problem.
View shed, that's very true.
We agree.
So, yeah, so as long as we address that, yes.
I was just shooting from the hip, you know, with Mr. Byerly, you know. The point is, you know, neighbors shouldn't have to see them. That's the point, I think. That's the guiding principle.
Madam Chair, if you have, I have a situation where we have a corner lot. Okay, then so, the, the, the backyard, okay, is visible
Right.
from the main drag, not from, okay, so.
Yeah.
It's visibility.
It's, the, the, that's the key, it's visibility, Mr. Cox, you're right, you're.
And at least that'll get us started, and we can have some dialogue in June regarding it.
Yep, yep, and just, I think, important to say on, on record, especially when we're, you know, talking about Henrico, we're different than them, in that they have staff full-time that go around the county proactively looking for this stuff and citing people. In Palatine, we're complaint-based, so we're, we don't have government staff driving around looking for people's vehicles, you know, it needs to be brought to us.
Right.
Where it's gotten so bad to that point. So again, if anybody's listening at home or concerned that that means we're going to go around rounding up vehicles all around the county, no, it's, it's really the ones that are so in the risk that, that somebody picks up the phone or stops by our office and needs some help, so.
That, that's a good point, you know, we're, we're we're not going to suddenly go out there and saturate the county with, you know, staff, you know, writing zoning violations. But at the same time, if we do have an egregious situation where somebody is doing something like I'm seeing in my district, we do want to deal with it. And follow up, and follow up.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, guys? Are you good? We'll move on to our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am, we don't.
Seeing no one. I will close our public comment period. Now we need to move into a closed session. Mr. Lackney?
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Palatine County desires to discuss enclosed meeting the following. Discussion consideration, interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of the public body with respect to county revenue collection, and consult, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of public body concerning single-cut lawsuit that was just filed. And whereas pursuant inspections two point two thirty-seven eleven A one and A seven of the Code of Virginia, since discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Palatine County does hereby authorize discussion for stated matters in closed meeting, that is a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have to do a roll call?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
If not, look at your calendars and we can let him know right away if Wednesday's.
Wednesday's at what, 2:00, 3:00?
2:30.
2:30.
3:00.
3:00 would be great. Just, it's Tom, you're.
Meeting will be at 2:00, Colonel Jordan is at 3:00.
I think Wednesdays are probably pretty good.
And the time, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. What is the time?
3:00, I think, right down.
Is that okay?
So you're on the 9th, the 16th, and the 23rd?
And the 30th.
Okay, on the 23rd, if you get too late, I'm leaving.
Fair enough.
Just want to let you know. It's a steer roast.
Oh, it is a steer roast that, yeah, that is a steer roast. Okay, that's, we'll double check all that. You had two comments.
I'm sorry, that's it. So there are only three meetings?
No. Pay attention, four.
9th, 16th, and 23rd.
And 30th.
Sorry, Bill, I'm just teasing you.
All right. Have at it. Just join in, get it on.
Board comments? Any board comments? None? All right, if not, meeting adjourned.